Thank you, Ms. Fajia. Good afternoon, everybody. First on our agenda is OPEB and our benefits. Mr. Haddo?
A couple things. We sent out some information last week to y'all. I can highlight it in this document. So there's not any changes from the three attachments, except it's now one document. The one new piece that, no, one document, that is probably new to you is when we talked about, I'm looking back around at this. When we talked about how many employees are going to be impacted by years, that number, the 105, 156, and 274, those are the number of employees that are being impacted. So, but no further ado, I can go through this and project it, but you have the document in print. But I'm going to just pull down and you can follow along. And I know several of you have taken notes. Last week will be my guest over here in the conversation with the board. Just note, from a presentation standpoint, these are all the benefits that we provide our employees. So it's a real quick, hey Dan, what is the current employee rate in the world of GMSD, or the medical, when there's concern, which is the Employee Assistance Program? The board on those two, the board subsidizes tax payer money for those two issues. At a certain per employee per month rate for the concern, or with the medical and a certain percentage based on the home rate. Everything else that you see, just to catch up to speed, is we made some changes with some bid processes that were shared earlier on, maybe a month or a few months ago, with some of the voluntary benefits that for our open enrollment, for the employees had a chance to choose. All the open enrollment visits have been taking place in the school. We're still doing some open enrollment for the board, the district office, and for the new hires, and also for our retirees, just to catch up to speed. But if you look at those voluntary benefits, they pay, fully pay for the Delta Down, fully pay for the Davis Vision, fully pay for their more long-term disability, fully pay into the flexible spending accounts, and what have you with the other American fidelity products, just so you get that. The Valix supplemental retirement is a, they pay if they want to contribute to maybe a 401K or a 403B, whichever one it is, just to give you a broad picture of what that looks like.
Life insurance? In the past, just legacy Shelby County, did Shelby County pay for that life insurance for the employees, or was that an option?
So life insurance, you can add to life insurance. I can add additional life insurance to what the district requires. So in the current rate, if I die, I think it's two times my salary, I'll do $300,000 threshold. If I'm a retiree, it's a $50,000 threshold for a one-time annual salary. But note that, I think that's where the confusion is, is I can add, I can buy some more long-term life insurance. And by age, like current state, I think my wife probably wants me to do that. But anyways, that's how it works. That's a voluntary.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. What you have, though, is that other post-employment benefits. And here's where it really kind of gets into, if you were to change the sample of the new policy language, actually, let me go over the past. This next part, which is the employee meetings that we had, and never made that suggestion, I think Suzanne and Kevin were behind that, Melissa, to go out there, maybe all of you all, Steve, is the head to the schools. And when you head to the schools, present. And we did that on all five schools. And we did that probably right when the committee, I'm trying to time this little tight window, but I'm glad we did it, because when we hit all the schools, this is what they saw. And this is what we presented to them. And we did it in a large group faculty meeting for those that wanted to attend. But then we told those people that, hey, tell your colleagues and your coworkers, come see us. And so we were out there all day. And the response to that, that was powerful, because I'll get into that, because I can't tell you what was the employees' take on all this. And so you're going to share some of that. And I'll be glad to answer questions on that part. But just note, the language that we used was, is that we borrowed some of the language from our current policy. So if you look at that language, and if you look at the why now, and the bounce back provision, and the years of service eligibility, all that came into tiers, and what tier did you fall into? And the new concept and all that is that bounce back provision. And so if you ask, hey, historically, where did that come about? That came about from watching some of our current retirees jump to another system. And that other system offers them benefits. However, they were forced to take those benefits, because we were providing them those benefits. So here with this bounce back provision is, if I, Dan, had to go work for the upper arms and school district up in Columbus, Ohio, and they offer me medical benefits, I have to jump on those benefits. So that's a call statement. So everything you're seeing is kind of a call statement. However, if I, Dan, had to leave the upper arms and school district, I'm allowed to bounce back into the tier that I left. And I'm going to go over the tiers here in a minute. But just note, that concept's a new concept, and it sure does, sure bias from my heart, the actuary of the Minneapolis, who had some experiences throughout the country of different ways to look at these benefits. So that's kind of a new concept. The why now, and I'm kind of jumping around, is because it's not cost-effective nor efficient to continue to carry the burden of the retirees as these cohorts continue to grow. So this tier, this tier stuff about-
I think you need to use stronger language than that. We can't continue to afford to pay for the benefits that we have. It's unsustainable. And it's going to happen in all the other districts, too. It's not something that we can pay for.
Thank you. So I'm going forward, and you're going to see these tiers in color. So don't get caught up in the tier language. What we told, not yet, because you're going to see it, the retiree study. What we told people was, you know, what to consider as you go through this. So the whole of this is, the real benefit, the real outstanding features of benefits is everyone is worried about their medical costs. And then everyone is worried about, hey, what Medicare is going to look like. And everyone, you know, life insurance kind of jumps in there a little bit, because it's an added benefit. So all those three, the medical benefit, and when you're talking about medical benefit, you're talking about, hey, did you get your years of service? And once you got your years of service, what's the gap look like to get to Medicare? And then once you're in Medicare, what does that look like to the people? And so all of these are going to change, and going to be tweaked, depending on those variables, as well as the life insurance. So when you look at those three, those are the three that we're really talking about. And you're going to see those change just a little bit, depending on the plan. And there's two plans that are being recommended, based on a financial threshold. And the financial threshold that we came up with, and Kevin's over here, but I think was $820,000 a year that we had to fund, up until we get to the total, I forget the total score, but I think it's, you're looking at that.
AAL.
Yeah, AAL.
The A20 is the ABC, or the Actuarial Determined Contribution, which is the AAL.
Our employees weren't told of the financial role behind it. They were just told, hey, how does this impact you? And what's this look like? And how you may have to plan ahead for it. The other deal, historically, when we started this two years ago, was, and this comes from our superintendent, I thought it was a wonderful initiative and a wonderful move, was, hey, Dan, these people are real close to retirement. It shouldn't be a cold shower for them. In other words, hey, you're shocking me, and you're shocking my system, and you're going to cause chaos in my world that I planned for all these years, and then boom, you're getting ready to do this. So that cold shower mentality is something to hang on to, because philosophically, we kind of stayed the line on all that. But you're going to see it with the colors. Everyone makes a little bit of a sacrifice, depending on which plan, Plan A or Plan B, that meets the financial threshold that Kevin just mentioned. Everyone's making a little bit of a sacrifice. It's how much of a sacrifice, who's going to, which tier group, and how does it look for that tier group? So I'm going to continue with this. Because here's where you get into the colors. And this is probably where maybe your questions come in. If you look at that tier group, and you think of gray, there's really three colors. There's the gray, and I don't know what color that is.
Pink, pink, green.
Pink and green. So gray, pink, and green, you're going to see two plans. And you're going to see a little cleats with each one. When you talk about the gray people, and the gray's easy to remember, because I am gray-headed, and I am in the gray, the gray cycle.
The gray people.
That is, if you look at the eligibility, that one has an eligibility requirement that currently mirrors TCRS. So when you talk about TCRS, you're talking about pension. You're talking about a defined benefit. You're talking about something that's unrelated to the medical, unrelated to Medicare, and unrelated to life insurance. You're just talking about a monthly defined benefit that's going to come to people that meet that eligibility. So that's going to be the, only in the gray do they have that minimum age, 55 and 15 years of service, or 25 years of service. Everything else is, you've got to have, you either got to be age 60 and 15 years of service, or 30 years of service. And let me give you a little history behind that. I thought it was brilliant whoever recommended that, because most people, you don't want to, in my world, or in the teachers' world, that 30 years is a pension piece, where your benefit multiplier is the most significant to you. People from TCRS tell you, do not retire before you get your 30 years, especially if you have 25, 26, 27, 28. So we didn't think there'd be that much of an impact for those people that are chasing 30 years, because they're going to walk away from too much towards their pension if they leave before they get that 30 years. So that's where that little adjustment came in. You do see, and I'm just going to stay with the tier one, so you get comfortable with the language. If you look, I hit the medical, and I hit the Medicare, and I hit the life insurance. Those three variables are going to continue, those three benefits are going to continue to cycle through this conversation. If you look at the medical and the gray-headed people, nothing changes. Same active employee rate, whatever we're paying for them, that's what we're going to pay for our retirees up until their Medicare are eligible. That's going to be with, and I'm going to be quick, that's going to be with the tier one and the tier two employee. We're going to cover your active employee rate, just like when we retire. So keep that in mind as we go through this. With the Medicare, here is where there's a little bit of change. The Medicare is, for the gray, is post-65, assuming that Medicare doesn't get chucked and jived with the current administration and how that plays out. But post-65 benefit, it's $150 to supplement, they're applying to supplementary insurance to cover the Medicare gap. Whatever Medicare doesn't pick up, we provide $150 for the individual. Or if they have a dependent, a spouse, or a child under the age of 26, we give them $300 stipend. Right now, that change is, is currently, if I would have retired in June before July 1st, we give them an option. And the option is, is you can get on a supplementary insurance that the district's providing.
And let me clarify some of the language, though. With this gray section, and with the pink session, this is the same benefit that our current employees have. So if we change nothing, if we just continue the same process, that's what all of these employees get. So they are staying on our plan at the same rates as our current employees. These are the groups that have the OPEB amount of money that we have to fund. This is the money that we have to essentially put into a savings account to save for them in retirement. That's the expensive benefit that we are giving them. The choice to switch to the Medicare subsidy, once they turn 65, Medicare takes over as your primary health insurance. And then we are paying a portion for that subsidy for that second part of that. This is, and so just to clarify what you're doing, this is all the same that they currently have. The difference that Mr. Haddo is going to highlight is, what you get for either life insurance, or for your spouse, is what changes between these two plans. And so that's really what this board is going to have to discuss, is what do they think has more value to the employees? Is life insurance post-65, or covering their spouses?
So if the employee comes to us at these employee meetings, and we go over, hey, what tier are you in? And then we decide, hey, if you're in this tier, this is what you get. Going on from Medicare to life insurance, if you look at the life insurance, the pre-65 and the post-65 stays the same in this plan for that tier one employee. It's that one-time your annual salary up to $50,000 max. In Plan B, it changes. So Plan B, if you're taking notes, it's that gray area post-65, that that life insurance is eliminated. We're not providing that life insurance. So that's where, when I got some questions. And there are some people saying, you mean to tell me that I'm losing my life insurance? Yes, so you got to buy some additional voluntary life insurance through your own pocket.
In Plan B.
The discussion that we have-
In Plan B, yes.
Yeah.
We can provide a supplemental health insurance plan that is fully funded by the employees, just like we bid out vision or dental. We can offer that service to them, that they can choose to take. So that's really the teeter totter here that we have to discuss.
That's a good question.
Yeah, because when I look at, the biggest thing is the life insurance. So in Plan B, it drops post-65. However, my question rests with, if pre-65, you've had the life insurance, and you're going to retire, you've hit 65, you can still continue with that same policy, can you? Continue with that same policy at employee's expense?
I'd have to check, but that'd be a great move.
Because it would be kind of a palace.
Can you pick it up? It'd be easier to transition.
You pick it up, but you don't lose, because if you have medical issues, getting a new life insurance policy is going to be burdensome, depending on your situation. And if you could continue that policy at the employee's expense, not the district, but you can continue on with that policy, that would be-
And I think that's going to be our decision.
That would be beneficial.
Because from the insurance company, they don't care who's paying the-
That's right.
The amount of money for this. It's just, as a district, are we offering that?
It's possible.
Because that's a good point, yeah. Just do the administrative.
Yes, that's administrative. I don't think it's something that we're going to have to go out and say, hey, insurance company, will you let us do this? It's just-
Because the money would just funnel through, in theory.
As a 60 some odd year old person who didn't think I needed to do this, now I've got to think beyond, you know, think about life insurance that I didn't anticipate thinking about. And maybe I have a heart condition, or maybe I have diabetes.
Something's developed since I had my plan.
Insurance, I think they call that evidence of insurability, and you're trying to eliminate that, having the combination.
Right. I think that that would be some reassurance.
And so my question is, would, is this something, though, that you wouldn't have to administer, would the insurance be willing to just transfer?
Well, it's not, it's not a challenge for us to administer the dental, the vision.
So you're saying you're willing-
Those are pass-throughs for us right now. This is just-
So you're willing to consider, after they've retired, administering it for them?
Yes.
Okay.
And what happens is, money is taken out of their retiring paycheck.
Okay. So there's a way to do it without adding additional work to the district?
Yeah.
Just like they normally-
Just like it happens right now.
Okay.
So I'm going to move forward on the gray. I'm going to go into the world of pink, some of the questions. Here, again, the medical's just like the gray for the employee. So if you see that, I'm going to look at it, but I'll say that. Yeah, now, here, though, the dependent, so I'm going to use me again, because my wife would look at me and say, hey, Dan, you're taken care of. However, for my wife's medical stuff, she's going to get a $300 stipend, monthly stipend to cover her to find her own plane, to shop her own plane. So that $300 stipend, pay attention to that, so if you do 300 times 12, which is about a month, you're talking about $30, $600 back. And there, though, and this is what I tell people, and this is kind of a not-fatalistic reality, by the time that person gets their 30 years of service in, who knows what that looks like? And who knows if that's a rich benefit or a poor benefit? Because you don't know if medical science has caught up to something, to say, hey, medical costs have gotten cheaper, or has it gone higher? And so if you look at the development, I don't want to get too far off tangent. The reason why hospitals are struggling, because they've taken away hospital work, and they put it at these daily places, med centers, where you don't stay overnight, the outpatient versus the inpatient. So if you look at that little development, you don't know what it's going to look like 30 years from now. But that would be a benefit that you're putting in there. But for some reason, I imagine that this policy will probably be revised, based on timing and circumstances. But currently, what we're telling people is, this is what you can expect to get in that tier group.
Quick question. That $300, are taxes taken out of that before they get it?
Yes.
That's what I'm just, I'm just saying. So it's really not true $300?
Yes. Going on with the Medicare subsidy, that is no different than the gray. Looking at the life insurance, and I guess we're going to have a little bit, that is no different than the gray. So there, if you look at the little phrase, not the cold shower mindset, but kind of a planning ahead mindset, is we're trying to tell people, hey, you need to plan ahead for this, if this shit happens, because that's a, the dependence's taking a little bit of a hit. Here's what surprised me, talking to the-
But let's clarify again. So what are they having to plan for, that they're not currently planning for? The change in the mindset is solely for your spouse. So if my, and what we're seeing with a lot of these individuals are that their spouses are employed. And what you don't see in the business world is this type of benefit in retirement. And so we're having a lot of, and I'm not stereotyping, there are CEOs who come over and say, great, we just picked up life insurance. Or they are gainfully employed people who are coming over and jumping onto our benefit plan to get that insurance. So the planning that they have to do for this, the planning mindset, is planning for your spouse's health insurance.
The person, and Jason wasn't there, but anecdotally, when you talk to the teachers, it didn't shock me, but there are several teachers that said, hey, my spouse, my, not to be generous, but my husband is self-employed, and he's dependent on this, on this medical benefit. And this would be a little bit of a change for him. So that was the one that kind of, you know, there's a lot of female teachers, spouses are self-employed, and they like the benefit, the fully medical benefit. So that came up in the-
So that is the negative with this plan, is that they, they essentially have, because these are the people who are, they could be at year 19, so they may be 11 years from retirement, and they've got 11 years to save for their spouse's health insurance in retirement. So that's the one drawback for this plan.
Any questions on the pink? What you're going to see on Plan B, and I'm going to show it to you, so you're going to take it easy. Plan B is that active, the medical, for the active employee rate, it also includes the dependents.
That's a great benefit.
That they're, that they're taken care of, just like in Plan Gray. But what they lose, is I think they lose something on the, I think they probably lose that post-65 life insurance.
They do, that's the difference.
Before you go to Plan B, do both of the plans have the bounce back provision?
Yes.
Yes.
So we haven't talked, discussed the bounce back provision, have we?
He went over it a little bit, yeah.
Okay, but it's a constant. So it is a recommendation that-
And that will be a new administrative process that's going to have to be taken over, which I know that y'all talked about, but that is something that, on our system.
Going with tier three, and I'm doing this by memory, and I apologize, but if you look, that eligibility is 30 years of service. I think that this, no, I'm wrong. This is a medical benefit where everything is stipend-based. Both, and this is, both greens are the same. They marry each other on Plan A and Plan B. So going through that, the medical is, we're, after you get that eligibility requirement, we're giving you $300 per month for individual, yes, it's taxed. We're giving you $600 if you have a dependent, a spouse, or those children under the age of 26. The Medicare subsidy is just like the others. The life insurance is pre-65 only. One-time general salary with $50,000 max. The bounce back provision, like Jason was saying, is constant. More planning ahead mindset. And what we're coming across, and I don't think a lot of people realize this, or at least I didn't until I started going to some of these meetings, the Tennessee Treasury Department, TCRS, is really trying to do an umbrella approach to, and I think they call it power. Not only do they want you to have your defined contribution, but now they're going a hybrid plan for these new employees, which is a 401K piece that goes into this 401K, and you may limit a little bit of what's being contributed to the defined benefit. But they're also providing a wraparound service with maybe some 401K, 403B investments. But they're also, if you pay attention to it, they're trying to do some of the college planning, and then I guess maybe, maybe 457Bs and the college tuition planning. So they're trying to get it all under this one umbrella. So when we're talking to teachers about this, we've come across someone that works this region of the state, and his name's Alan Landrieu. And so he's been coming in, talking to our employees on an individual basis. What we want to do with this tier group, and this is planning ahead strategically, is to invest soundly, because you don't know what the future holds. And so Alan, he's agreed, and when we come in, you know, probably on the new employee orientation would be one, but then other employees, whether you're my age and headed, or whether you're the middle tier, or whether it's young tier, is, hey, he's willing to come out and talk to all these different tier groups on investment strategies. So we're really trying to, you know, our guiding principle is to give, is to dignify people. And a lot of that is through compensation and the head benefits. But this is what these two look like. But that green, if you look at the green with Plan B, it's the same, so they married each other. So I want to jump, unless, I want to slow down a little bit. Does anyone have any questions?
I'm sorry.
And I will jump on the bandwagon, say, this is something that Mr. Jones has talked about, too. Eventually, as a board and as a district office, we need to look at, how are we educating our staff? And do we develop programs that encourage them to invest, encourage them to save? And so, as I know, Mr. Jones has had some really creative ideas, talking about, how can we do this for employees? And so there may be things that we're bringing forward to y'all to say, what can we do to really help them pay?
Help close the gap.
I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, I do, too.
Work on these previous downshifts.
Yeah.
The other piece that I'd like to say is, eventually, these three tier groups, you cover the cost of their OPEB. And then does that free up a certain amount of money? When does that free up that certain amount of money? If you cover it, and what do you do with that? I don't know, is that by, or is it in the OPEB, like I think, maybe being actuary, year-by-year deal?
Right.
Of course, you're chasing the gap. And I think that we see, we had more.
Suzanne? Okay. Remind me, I know that we had this conversation in committee, but I cannot remember, what does the state provide? Like, if we provided nothing, and I know that the teachers get a benefit, what do they get?
So what's, you have different types of districts across the state. But what's provided by them is retirement.
Okay.
So all teachers are invested, and now we essentially have two different plans. So we have people who are legacy, and it changed essentially three years ago, that it was a defined benefit plan. Every month, they're taking a certain amount out of my paycheck, they look at my highest five years, consecutive years in a row, and there's a little formula they can do, and they say, this is how much you're going to get in retirement.
Okay.
So that's one group of teachers and employees who are getting that. So we do it for all of our employees. The other group of employees that we have are the new employees. So in the past three years, if they have come on, they're still getting money taken out towards TCRS, which is their retirement. But it's more like a 401K. The state realized they couldn't keep investing in a defined benefit plan.
Right, right.
So what they have is this kind of sliding scale for the employees. And so it does a prediction, too, about how much they're going to invest, and how much they're going to get out of this. But it assumes a certain percentage that they're going to make off the stock market or their investment.
Right, if they keep investing, and maybe they need to add more, they need to bump it up, okay.
So those are the two different groups. So you are given a retirement. So that's what's common across the board of the state.
Okay.
But then you have two different types of districts. You have districts that have health insurance, like we do.
Okay.
The majority of districts do not provide OPEB benefits. A lot of them are on the state health insurance plan, which is a big group that they all invest in, and they don't provide post-deployment benefits. But then you have some that are self, have self-insured plans, like we do. And so we have historically offered OPEB benefits. So we will be much more in line with what the rest of the state is doing when we do this, because most of those people are on the state plan. We looked at the state health insurance plan when we were first created as a district. The benefits are really not rich, really high deductibles. It was not comparable to what we had with Shelby County schools. So that's where you get retirement.
Right. Quick question. Do you have a dollar figure of the difference between Plan A and Plan B?
I can show, well, I'll show you that.
Okay.
But I got, I have to figure out, but I'll show you. I think it's about $20,000 to $40,000.
Okay.
I thought it was $30,000.
Something in that range. I'll show you.
That's fine. I just was curious of what the dollars-
It's not a significant amount of money for the two plans. So really, we need to talk about what you're getting.
That's what I wanted to know, if money was a factor.
For some of the other plans that we looked at.
Yes. That weren't on the table.
That's right.
This is recommended Plan B, and just to rehash it, you know, they go, if you look at the post, the gray headed people, which is myself, I don't want to offend anyone. Post-65, no benefit is provided with the life insurance. And like Jason was saying, is that no supplementary insurance, that is taken away. There was one committee member, he's still an active committee member, said, Dan, hey, this is a richer benefit for people if they know how to plan and enroll into supplementary insurance to fill the gap with Medicare. Because he really liked getting $150 a month. And I did add an attachment, I think the state provides supplementary insurance, and I may have added an attachment to it a while back. It seems to be it's about $132 a month for that Medicare gap.
He did not seem to think that this is an unreasonable amount. I mean, with his research that he had done, he felt very good about the supplemental insurance he was able to get.
And it is, it is income.
Some of our recent retirees are going for the supplement.
Exactly.
Don't put the subsidy.
The subsidy.
So just note that's what's changed, is that, is the life insurance. And that one is a, you know, depending on which attorney you talk to, and I've talked to two, is hey, you know, one was, hey, they'll have another good life insurance benefit, Dan, that's not gonna be big of a hit. But then the other attorney said, Dan, would you like to have $50,000 taken away from your family? And I thought, you know, that's a good point. And then what's really cute with talking to teachers, is that one teacher was saying, hey, well, I know my nieces and nephews, they're gonna take care of this life insurance, and they're gonna give me a good funeral paper for my casket. And the other teacher says, no, they're not, you're dead. They're gonna have a fine party without you. I thought, uh, that's, that's pretty good. So just kind of depending on.
Cremation, that's the way to go.
It's a benefit, so you have to look at that, you have to look at that. The tier two, like I was telling you, is the active employee for both retiring and dependents up until now, charitable. So that comes back around. The life insurance was, you had no life insurance benefit is provided. The green stays the green, nothing, nothing going on with the green. So that's what was expressed to our employees. And probably if you said, hey, how many employees did you reach? I think it was very favorable, but I did not have people sign in and take names and all that stuff. I think it was very favorable based on going out to all the high schools. So they've made that recommendation. I appreciate that recommendation, kind of all spread. This next part is, there is a, and I wish you were here. We have a, an intern that's helping us out a little bit. She's trying to learn some policy language. Here was your challenge, put this in policy language. I already had a template, I already have one developed way back. But this is what a, a sample new policy would look like. And I only bring this up to you because the other one that's out there right now can be a little bit cumbersome.
Yes.
Hey, you fall here, or this day here, this, this, this. This tried to simplify it, so it's not, all this is, is good for the active, for the first couple pages, and I hope I highlighted it. It's here that you're going to see, hey, what would it look like? So we put it together, and everything in those tiers was discussed. And this is what it would look like in policy language. Now, I didn't, I didn't do Plan A and Plan B. I think this may be Plan A, but I'm not sure. But if you look at the policy, this is just a sample of what it would actually look like. And what I envision happening is, is hey, Dan, you know, once the board gives the recommendation, which one to approach, Plan A or Plan B, go ahead and develop the policy. This is all draft, make sure the policy reads what it should read. Probably have it vetted through, maybe, maybe the attorney. The bounce back provision kind of has my attention, is that legally sound, can we do that legally? That has my attention a little bit. But this is what it would look like. And so I'm kind of moving quick through it. I did highlight a couple of tiers, years of service, and bounce back provision would be the, would be the, the, the couple changes in that.
The one thing on the, the chart, which I thought was very helpful, on C, on page four, on the retiree life insurance, where we say yes, I was wondering if we should put the dollar amount since it's different than the active?
I think I did on this one.
Oh, did, okay, I'm sorry.
I think I put $50,000.
No, I meant in this chart in the policy.
Oh, yeah, I can, yeah, I can, yeah.
I mean, just, yeah, just so that it's, I mean, if we're gonna, as far as policy going forward.
Yeah, so the policy needs to find what that.
Right, just because if, if you revert back to what the current employees get, then it's different.
So let me make sure I got this. That would be one-time general salary, $50,000 max.
Yeah, that's, yeah, just in this chart, yeah. Well, or, yeah, just in the, just in the policy piece that you have.
So I'm gonna leave what it said.
Keep going, Dan, we'll show you where it is, keep going.
Keep going, keep going, Dan, yeah.
Keep going, no other way.
Other way.
Keep going.
You got it, keep going. One more.
It's on page nine.
Thank you. Yeah, that one right there.
Right here. So take that number and put it in, see where it says tier one, yes?
Yes.
Yes, I'm gonna put the number.
Yep.
Once we decide on which plan.
Right, right.
So I'm gonna go by this, because I think I've explained it. And then, I don't know if there's anything left, oh, the addendum. This was tricky, and I did this, I'm gonna should have taken it on this at the beginning of my address this room, and it may not be officiated except by me, because I laugh at myself. Is the addendum was done when I was in St. Petersburg, Florida. I was trying, I was on vacation, which is fun, I like to work. But I was kind of looking at it thinking, hey, what changed from the current policy?
Kind of defeats the purpose, Dan.
Yeah, what changed from the current policy? So if you look at the yellows, the eligibility criteria, this kind of change, and all this language, employee honor after July 1, 2014, just now it changed to tiers. So if you look at my yellow, that's what that means. This one kind of has my attention, and that, this hit from talking to an employee. She worked for Shelby County Schools, but she had to take FMLA, or she had to take a leave, or she had to step back, and then she came, because of family considerations. And then she came back, hey, Dan, where am I? Do these years count? So that combined continuous service, combined continuous service may be changing. I want to include her, I don't want to penalize her if she had the years falling in that tier one. So how many people are there like that?
So they worked for us for eight years, then come back for us for seven years.
And then they came back and retired. You know, they may have worked in, in Shelby County Schools in 2090.
Maybe not continuous, but combined.
Yes.
Years of service.
So just be aware of that, and I ran that by the actuary, hey, how much is this gonna ding us? And he said, hey, not much.
I can imagine.
It's not gonna be, it's not gonna be that much. So be aware of some of that red. Note it was two years, and depending on which, you know, year you started or when you worked. This actuary report's based on an assumption, assumption that you, you contributed to the medical plan a year before you retired.
Yeah.
So that simplifies the policy. So just look at that. The purple means that it matches what we currently have going on. So I was trying to be.
That helps, to know.
Purple means hope in some of this.
The purple looks a little bit like the black in my eyes right now.
That's why you need readers, hush us.
I can't come on any.
Just give in, Amy.
So some of that language that you're seeing in there is, you know, it gets a little bit convoluted. What I like to think is we simplified the policy through all these, through all these changes. Simplified policies, in my mind, is a better policy, even though details are important. But it seemed like this, this current one, there are a lot of, lot of groups of people that run with different eligibility requirements based on when they started, how many years they were in MCS, Memphis City Schools, Shelby County Schools, or UMS. So you're gonna see a real, hopefully a policy redesign, it's a benefit definitely. So that's what you have in front of you. I think the decision points, and if I had were to add a page, hey, the decision point is how important is life insurance versus, versus how important is full medical for that second tier group and their spouse versus a stipend? I think those are the two decisions.
That's the question.
Did you, when you talked to them, was, was there a plan, particularly with tier one and tier two employees, that they tended to lean more toward? Or was it always kind of?
Depending which tier group, yeah.
Depends, just depends.
And Dana and I disagree on this one.
Uh-oh.
Because, and that's a good disagreement. For, for me, the value for my wife and my family would be that I get to carry her on the, my health insurance. The value of the life insurance is a smaller amount that we can plan for to deal with the life insurance. And I think about what's the value for us for life insurance? We want to pay for our funerals. We don't want to leave debt to our children. And if we're talking about when we're 65, 70, hopefully they're not dependent on us.
Ball goes according to plan.
So, so that's plain, but I, I think, Dan, you see the life insurance as being more valuable, don't you?
No, my script, and I was afraid you guys were gonna ask me, is to stay neutral. Because when you're out there talking to people, it's important to both parties. And so for me to say, hey, Dan, you're, you know, maybe two or three years out of this, I think it'd be very selfish to say, life insurance is the same.
What's the cost, what, what would that be for the life insurance, for them to pick it up on their own?
That would.
Through us?
Yeah, I'd have to, I'd have to look at that.
Could we do that, because that would help.
It's very inexpensive.
That's what I figured.
If you pick up the AARP, you can get it real cheap.
Several dollars a month.
Several dollars a month, that's, I figured it can be that.
There's a lot of people vying for that business out there, I think.
So you're, you're talking a few dollars a month. It should be cheaper for them.
It'd be interesting if you could find that, see what we're, see what that is.
And it's a possibility, because I, that.
For them to stay on.
I think that's good.
But I, but in part of this education piece, and preparing and planning ahead, that's also something important that we includes, not just.
For how much it would cost for them, right?
Right, that they understand if, if that's the plan we choose, that this is something that they need to plan for. And that there is value in life insurance. Because a lot of people don't carry, don't think about it till they get to be. Well, no, till they, well, I mean, till they hit close to retirement age, and then it's suddenly important.
And it's more expensive.
Yes. But see, I can see why the medical piece of it would be more valuable, keeping my dependent on, particularly depending on the health of my dependent.
That's right.
You know, because I know Ben would have retired a year ago, except for medical. I mean, he's staying on for medical reasons.
The other piece I look at, and I, this, I listed broadly, hey, Danny Miller showed the numbers, 156 people could be greatly impacted by that one move to take their dependence off the medical. Whereas 105 people, based on Kevin, my right, AARP's not that, not that costly for life insurance. If you just use situational ethics or logic compared to grasp logic, you could probably lean towards, hey, tier two people need to be protected. Get bigger vein for your dollar for that medical group and those dependents.
Because $300 stipend does not go far in the world of insurance.
No. Especially not when it's, that's pre-taxed.
Yeah.
Well, if you're looking at buying your own insurance, I buy mine, it's $800 a month.
Yep.
But I've already paid for my funeral and have $250,000 life insurance.
That's gonna be a big party.
You're running into life insurance, or the health insurance, I mean.
You decide on all your beneficiaries.
Big Dan wants no kid you had in. Uh-oh.
Yeah, I'm worth a hell of a lot more dead than I am.
So that'll be, yeah, that'll be to do, I'll get back to you on that. I'll be back in 24 before you have it. So you got me to channel it through Linda or just?
I think all of us.
All of us, just send it to all of us. That would be great, I think that would give us an idea.
So Mr. Hadder, next step for us at the business meeting on the 19th, is the objective then for the board to vote on the new policy with the choice of plans? Is that your objective?
Yeah, if you give me the license to, on that section is, just know I may have a plan, a Plan A in there instead of Plan B, not the buyer's, just so you can see what the policy looks like, yes. So the goal is to have the policy written, and you can say, hey, switch this.
Plug in the factors.
Plug in the right, right plan, even though I want to put one up there.
Right, right, right.
And then.
Makes sense.
Yeah, so then you look at the policy revision, and yes, we vote on this policy. We either approve it, or we want amendments, or however you want to play it.
Well, and thank you for doing, doing the numbers, because I think being able to see the number of employees that are impacted, you know, by that one, you know, by the different changes. I mean, life insurance is pretty much all of them, but that's a big, that's a, a big number.
Thank you, Alyssa, for all your work too, Ms. Drut.
Kevin's been instrumental.
Yes. And Mr. Jones?
Yeah, we're, we're.
Mr. Jones.
Thanks, any other questions?
Great job.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
No more questions? Next on the agenda is.
Well, just one thing to point out, because Kevin's done a great job, because it, you have to first figure out the policy to give the actuaries to figure out the, what the numbers are gonna come up with. But then you have to have the financial piece of how much does that cost us every year to, to get that done? And Kevin's done a great job of, from a management perspective.
And we've been working on this a very long time.
Yes.
So you have the investment management agreement with the district and US Bank. Just to look at, it's the, I guess, printed page after page, 16 or 17. And this is all the investment management agreement. All the actuary assumptions assume a 7% rate of return on our investments.
Yes.
And our actuary and US Bank got together, this is their approach in hopefully achieving the 7% rate of return. And this is a one-year contract with the US Bank to a flat fee of $10,000. And then you've also got the, an investment report on the OPEB trust from US Bank as of May 31st. So this will show you, I guess like on the third page, the valuation of 1.2 million amount in the trust fund. And our investment income is right at 9,700 for the month. So we're, we're right on track.
And again, I think are we the only school district of the municipalities that's fully funding their OPEB? Thank you, I know this, we've really been working on this since we opened the doors, so it's finally come to fruition here of funding our post-deployment benefits. So Mr. Hadder, again, will send us all some information on the cost of retired life insurance, and if it is possible to have them extend on their own, with their same policy.
So they, they don't miss a beat.
Right.
Just logistics to accomplish that.
Right.
I think if it is, I think it's gonna be small for that, that knowledge for employees, that the impact is.
Right, for them to pick that up on the backend would be minimal compared to, compared to what they could get through the 11 through 19 years.
Any further questions?
Thank you, very thorough.
Yes, thank you, great job, great job. Next on the agenda is the superintendent evaluation for 2018. I think we ended our last meeting, or a couple meetings ago. There was a couple sample evaluations to look at, just so you could see them. But I think the main thing to talk about today is, is if we want to change our process, if we think we need to make any changes to the evaluation, so that we can get those into place before July 1.
Having spoken with, spoken to TSB, I really think it would be wise of us to use the TSB service, the discussion about training, the discussion about making sure everybody's on the same page, and the use of a third party, I think is wise. And for $2,000, it's a good use of money to have the process be as transparent as possible, as thorough across the board for each of us, and they provide a mid-year evaluation, which I think is also helpful.
I definitely think we need to change the format.
And they worked with you on that too.
I liked one of the formats that we looked at. I did some research on different, how different districts or different states primarily do theirs and their recommendations, and found some really good ones, and some ones that, that really, I thought, I know New York's was a particular favorite of mine, because it broke down, if you were doing like board relations, and it was going, bouncing through, it explained what a five was, what a four was in that particular top area. So that it, it was completely broken down. So it was a lot more reading, but it was very self-explanatory, because a five, four, three, two, one is different depending on the area that you're, I mean, depending on what topic you're, you're focusing on for your evaluation. And so they, it, it, I thought that one was particularly good.
New York State.
I have a copy, Ms. Landshooter.
Yeah, I shared it with her.
I made some copies.
Okay.
I would have stayed with y'all, but it was like 20 pages.
My concern with TSB is they're not providing the service on the right things. So I think the issue that we had with my evaluation was defining what each of those numbers means. And having examples of what each of those things are, and be exemplized. So even if they came in and we went with them, all they're doing is coming in comprised, y'all aren't really getting training on what is a four.
Did you give Amy one?
Yeah, I have hers, but I don't care, this is yours, isn't it?
Yeah, that's, that's a full one, I was reading.
So what is a four, what is a five? All they're doing is tabulating and doing the scores and calculating it. So that's a good service, but I, I think the challenge is like when we have administrators who get certified to do evaluations, we have to watch videos. We see, this is how you justify what a five is, this is what you see what a four is. They go, it's a weekend training, and I think they have to get recertified every year, and they watch videos, and they take tests on it. That's not what TSB is gonna give y'all with the evaluation. The reason I like the New York one is it's very definitive, where it says, this is what you see for exceeding expectations, or this is what you see if it is meeting, or this is what you see. So whatever we agree on, that's all I would say, is let's choose one that's.
That has more.
It's really defined.
I, I don't disagree about that.
I think that sounds good.
Yeah, what I would say about the TSB is, is the, the feedback I got from them is that we could customize what we would want from them, to your point, so that, you know, as board members come and go, they could, if we had something like this, they could take the time as an objective person to say, this is what it means, that they would get to know our evaluation. So I think, to your point, it's a good one, I think it's a blend of two. I think it's a, a blend of objective of, of somebody else having to tabulate and trying to keep it neutral, at the same time ensuring that we have the appropriate training and that we have the appropriate knowledge behind the evaluation. What is it that we're trying to achieve? I think a good combination of those two.
I also looked at AAAS, had a white paper on evaluating superintendents. And one of the things they did that I personally like is they did a scale of zero to four, so that a zero gave you the option of cannot judge, which was my particular, which y'all all know about, my particular challenge, that if you didn't feel like you had the experience, necessary information, you had something you could do, rather than just kind of guess, so you could do the, but. Anyway, it's double A S A, W W W, double A S A dot org. Yeah, they've got great stuff on there. I love it, W A S A.
I, I find that appealing as well.
You know, so, but you're so, an exemplary profession, and I like the use of professional. Exemplary professional performance would be four, so that would be your top. exemplary professional performance would be four, so that would be your top. Sorry, I didn't think to make copies.
No, 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 that's, that's fine, we can, yeah, it's all good.
Oh, do you mind?
And I think too, just to take a step back.
Several pages.
Everybody has the, the evaluation, I mean, evaluation.
And I do like, like, things.
The evaluation of directors.
I like, I like that format of having comment section on there as well. I think that was really good right there with it.
I think comments would be good, too, but I just remember to, in the policy, it says that we need to include, because we've sort of talked about this too in relation to our strategic plan, that there are, do have to be sections regarding student achievement, relations with staff and personnel, relations with board members, which this does cover all of those categories very nicely. And you could then add comments as well.
Yeah, it is.
But I think also, too, some of the things, we've had some discussions, you know, this is our superintendent's personnel evaluation, and how many people have their evaluations done in the public? That, that is a difficult task at times. And some states let you go into executive session and release a summation. In the state of Tennessee, we are not allowed to do that by law. The same with the individual, our individual board evaluations are public documents. They can't be shredded. Same thing again, that, once we complete those, those are public documents. So we just need to keep all, some of those things in mind.
Oh, yeah.
But I think if we, even with the zero to four ranking or whatever, having that clarification of a zero is a, I don't have enough...
Observe, yeah.
Like an N A.
Exactly, exactly.
Right, and it doesn't count in scoring. The other thing that I want to, with the, that I think needs to change, and I think you and I kind of talked, touched about this at one point, I think when we do feel that there's a need for improvement, that if that's the score we're gonna give, then we need to, we need to justify that. We need to make a comment, because the expectation of not putting it in writing is difficult for any employee. So that if we feel strong enough that we're going to do a two or below, then we need to, we need to enumerate what it, what it is that concerns us. And I think that's, that's only fair.
And that is part of our policy as well, number five, all documentation will be supported by objective evidence if it is already stated.
But, but on the form we currently use...
We don't, it's not equipped to do that.
I mean, honestly, having done, this is a whole lot more user-friendly.
Yes, it is.
Yep. But I did like, one of the things I liked about New York's, which I think you could easily do, is the explanation of the rating scale.
Yes, I agree. Because I do think that there, there's some, there's some differences based on, to your point, let's say, the category that you're dealing with.
Right.
But I also think that, because I think we should spend as much time on areas where we think maybe there's improvement, but also the areas where we felt like there's been exceeding, and so I think, I think, that's exactly, I think, when, yeah, exactly, so that when you, anything other than just the, the needs, or whatever that term is we come up with, I think it'd be great to have that dialogue as well.
Absolutely. If you, if you give a low score, there needs to be, but I think also if you give a five, there has to be both ways.
Right.
Both ways.
One session, let everybody take a moment to look at it, yeah. Go home, look at, look at this one, and, and, I mean, I think there's some agreement, and I did show this to the superintendent, because he does have input, too.
Oh, absolutely.
And I did show him this, and he felt comfortable with this one from New York, but we can talk about, go home, look at this, let's look at the...
My, my request would be, let's take the New York as the base, let's tweak it with Lakeland's and with the...
The comments and the scoring.
With the N A and create something.
Yes, yeah, kind of like...
Because that one is so, it's, it's like when we found the, the scoring for the site selection.
I was, you were reading my mind, yeah, I thought the same thing, yeah.
You know, when we found those, and it's so defined about what each one is, it helps explain that stuff.
And two, the other thing is, you can also, and this is just, I, I, I think, we don't want something cumbersome as well.
Right, right.
But I think also, too, when we look at it, think about, do we want to add some smart goals that align with the strategic plan? I'm, I'm not suggesting many, I don't think you should have more than three to five.
Sure.
But you might, we might want to think about that, if we want to pull a couple things from our strategic plan to put in there, because that is our guiding...
I completely agree.
...document.
Yeah, because that, that back end of the one we did, I just really didn't think it matched what we needed, but that would be absolutely, if you pulled out what we felt was the most important that we wanted to focus on as a board, and, and also that helps the superintendent and, and...
The staff.
The staff know where our thinking is, and, and I think that's, that makes great sense.
Well, I think when you have your strategic plan, it is over a five-year period, and it's, and I think that would help, say, what, this year, because we're looking at an evaluation for one year, to say, what are the key areas that we're gonna be focusing on that we need to make a difference? I also think that there probably are some things that might not necessarily be in the strategic plan that we would, as a board and a superintendent together, say, these are some things we'd like to make sure we do get accomplished, whether it's working on the board relationship, whether, you know, what are the things that might be different each year, but to have those things at the back that is a part of this establishing the next year evaluation, these are the things we want to focus on in two thousand and eighteen. And then, to your point, putting that, and that we've, we're all on board with that, and then that feeds into what we have.
Because I think that's the one thing that's lacking in Lakeland's.
I would agree with that.
Yes.
I would agree with that.
And I think we also, as far as the process, I think that we need to, you know, think about a, a process such as whether, first, we start with superintendent doing a self-assessment, then our board doing the self-evaluation, and then we doing a summation. But before we do our self-board evaluation, we in turn have the superintendent and his staff come together and give us a realization of those goals before we fill our, our evaluation. I think that, that we have the...
Of the goals at the back that we establish.
Well, because I think personally, the retreat was great, but everything was backwards for me.
Yeah.
I, I should have been able to hear the staff talk about how we, what we've done to accomplish the, the goals of the strategic plan.
And what we're gonna be doing.
Before I did his evaluation.
That's a very valid point.
So that's what I'd like to see, is our superintendent do a self-assessment, we then have the superintendent and his staff come back with a realization of their goals and talk to us. We also receive a superintendent's report that is aligned with those goals that you receive, which, you know, if you have those in place before you do your evaluation, I think that would help. And then, everybody on our board do an evaluation, and we do a summation, and then we meet with the superintendent and do, you know, his, his evaluation and set goals for the, for the next year.
I think that's a great plan.
Because he doesn't currently do a self-evaluation.
I did not.
No.
I think that's valuable.
I think that's valuable.
Another thing I'm working with Dr. Park on, is she showed me what they do with the DeSoto superintendent. It's not just me that you're evaluating, too, it's also my cabinet and what we've accomplished and what we can do. They really work together to create documentation during the year to show you, here's how we're trying to achieve these goals, and here's what we're working on, because I think the most important thing, that's what I tell my principals, it's not always about a test score, it's not always about a, a result for something, it's what are we doing to monitor and adjust as we're going through the process?
Absolutely.
And are we being intensive on, on what we're doing? And so there's a lot of good documentation that she showed me with that, and I shared that with you, too.
Which I think, to your point, would be if we had that ahead, kind of like, almost have the retreat and then evaluation, you know, kind of, you know what I'm saying? So it's more focused on...
It would be nice, I think, during, to have the retreat be a time of discussion for us about other topics, and then have, again, the evaluation be a separate event, because we, we could be discussing, after we watched Bartlett and their experiment with grades, that might be something we're discussing next year, or some of these other things that come up.
I think it'd be more valuable.